Oh, yeah, yeah. I am. Okay.
I had a birthday party.
Oh, you did?
I already knew. But we had a good time the storm went over.
Looking at that MRI, there is no way that thing won't get injured with use. You know, all that stuff flowing into it, it's like a Delta, a river Delta, you know? Actually. Yeah, that's a lot. Well, glad you're here. How long ago did you do it? All right, well, you were moving along? Yeah, when you, have you started rehab yet? Yes. Isn't that nice? I probably wouldn't have tested myself for COVID this, I had it second time. And, and just because I, my boy was coming home just for a few days and then going to, on a school, uh, class, uh, taking a class in Czech Republic. And I knew I couldn't give it to him, you know, and I just felt a little funny and sure enough, it was almost not. It was just, I just had to stay down in the basement for a week. I just had, like I had a bad cold, a little bit of, little bit of body temperature issue.
I'm getting ready to load it up, David.
First time I had the fever and everything, I was between my two shots and oh, my God, it didn't last too long, the fever part, like three days. I was relegated to the basement. Threw food down the steps. The dog came and slept on my feet till I had to move. I, I, I had, I slept in a chair and I was like, you take the couch. The dog would not. I was like, there are other people in this home except for me. And it's not a huge dog, it's a fifty pound dog. She wouldn't want. Wanted to sleep on my feet and it was not, could do such threat. No David Emmert tonight?
Don't need a chair back quick. Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by, you'll be joined in shortly.
The time has arrived for us to call our July nineteenth meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And before we do the invocation, I'd take great pleasure in introducing our new board members. First, Representative from District Two, Mrs. Carol Stiff. And secondly, Representative from District Seven, Mr. Cannon Watson. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. The pleasure be to us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would address board members. Does anyone have a conflict of interest disclosure? Patty?
No.
Lou?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Carol?
No.
Oh, Cannon?
No.
Thank you so much. Recognitions, Ms. Crystal Baker, would you come forward?
Recognitions is the opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to recognize achievements in our community with a focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers who serve the county of Prince Edward. We'd like to recognize Prince Edward County's July Employee of the Month, Bernice Letterman. Bernice is the Administrative Assistant for Prince Edward County Sheriff's Office and is commonly referred to as Wonder Woman by the Sheriff's Department. Our deputies are uniformed, equipped, and ready to respond because of her hard work behind the scenes. She wears many hats and never complains. Ms. Letterman goes above and beyond her job description. When asked her favorite part of the job, of course, Bernice stated taking care of her guys and gals. Congratulations, Bernice. Thank you for all of your continued hard work and dedication to Prince Edward County. Would you mind coming to the front?
We'd like to present you first as one of the sufficient candidates for July Employee of the Month. And a certificate for thirty dollars subscription fee.
She will take you out to lunch?
About thirty bucks?
Everybody else can stand, kind of pull up behind.
Supervisor Emmert is here in sphere. Sure.
While we're, um, bring to you F C, while we're down, we've got another recognition we'd like to make. Madam Chair, members of the board, it gives me great pleasure to introduce you this evening to Morgan Elizabeth Curtis. Morgan is a twenty twenty-two graduate of Prince Edward County High School. She's the first of our vaccinated Prince Edward Scholarship recipients that the Board of Supervisors will celebrate. Morgan will be attending Stanford University in Nepal. She is doing this evening by her family. Thank y'all for coming up, well. Dr. Pride, you have a two thousand dollar check to present to Morgan and ask the board to join us again for a photograph.
Morgan, Board of Supervisors presents this check to you for two thousand dollars to further your education at Stanford University. Congratulations.
Let me make sure I can get all of the board members.
Congratulations, young lady. Awesome. Wonderful.
Good luck, Mom, Dad.
That is wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that was nice. Really nice.
And Morgan, the real check's in the mail.
Absolutely wonderful, Morgan, and we know you would do well.
You're welcome.
At this time, I wish to recognize that Board Member David Emmert is participating this evening via remote telephone access. As required by the Board of Supervisors Electronic Meeting Policy and Section two point two dash three seven zero eight point two of the Code of Virginia, Supervisor Emmert has provided notice that he would have to be physically absent from tonight's meeting due to illness. He has requested remote participation in tonight's meeting from his home near Prospect, Virginia. His request is in conformance with the Board's electronic meeting policy and the requirements of the Code of Virginia. Pending an objection from a board member, a member of this board, Supervisor Emmert's participation shall be approved and noted in the minutes of tonight's meeting. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have public participation. Public participation is an opportunity for you as citizens to give input on relevant issues, not the subject of a public hearing, and is not intended as a question and answer period. Mr. Stanley, has anyone signed to speak?
Sheriff's gonna grab that sheet for me, hold on.
Thank you.
It's up here?
It's empty.
Oh, it's over there. It's empty.
Does anyone in the audience have a desire to speak at this time? Okay, thank you much. The time there comes for the Board of Supervisors. And I'm gonna shift this around a little bit. I usually call on Patty first, but I'm gonna say something first. We welcome you all to tonight's meeting. It's good to have you. You are active participants in Prince Edward County, and we're grateful to have you here. Cannon, comments?
Thanks for coming. You know, I've learned in my time on the planning commission, you don't know their issues sometimes unless the people who, of the citizenry pointed out. And it's an honor to be here.
Thank you, Carol.
Having me.
Welcome, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. And if anyone has any input or any comments, we certainly would like to hear them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, Jerry.
Thank you for being here and your participation.
David, would you like to make a comment?
Just wanna say that I'm sorry I'm not there, but to welcome Cannon and Miss Stiff and the board, thank you all for being here also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty?
I'd like to say welcome to everyone, happy to see your faces, and praying that we all stay well.
Amen.
And Lou?
Glad to see everyone tonight.
Thank you. Again, everybody, welcome. If you look at the consent agenda, you've looked over it, are there any questions or comments? If not, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Case of movement and second, that consent agenda be approved. David? Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
And I approve, so moved. Next on the agenda, how it matters, Mr. Scott Frederick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board.
Good evening.
Administrator Stanley, thank you for having me tonight. A couple of years ago, I presented on fatalities. Every year, when the numbers come in, I think it's a great, you know, topic to present on. It's kind of tough to do it here tonight with what recently happened with Supervisor Jones. So, uh, but I do think this is a good message to get out, I'm gonna give it anyway. So, there were nine hundred and sixty-eight fatalities in Virginia in twenty twenty-one. That's pretty well known, we put it on our variable message boards, like when you, on an interstate, you may see it. It's on our social media from time to time, I see it, and then even in newspapers, you might read about it. I feel like what's less known is what some of the contributing factors are in those fatalities, or the fatal crashes. Two hundred and forty-seven of the fatalities had alcohol involved in the crash. Three hundred and thirty-four had unbelted or unrestrained drivers. Um, and four hundred and forty-five speed was a contributing factor in the crash. So, um, that's a lot of those crashes, if you think about, you know, that many contributing factors. I mean, there, there is a chance that the same crash could have had speeding, unrestrained drivers, and alcohol involved. So, it doesn't mean that, you know, every single fatality had a contributing factor, is not what I want to say there, just pointing that out. But, you know, as far as seatbelt usage goes, the DMV's website, where I get these numbers, it said that eighty-one point seven percent of drivers use seatbelts. So I don't know exactly how they gather that data, but, you know, it's on their website, and they're, they're a state agency as well. I take it to be a pretty solid fact. But that's like four out of five drivers, you know? So we, I think as Virginians, we should all, you know, wear our seatbelts, so. But the numbers are also broken down by counties. So, since I live in Prince Edward, I'm in Prince Edward County tonight presenting, I wanted to share the numbers on crashes if you're here in twenty twenty-one. There was three hundred and twenty total crashes in Prince Edward County. Seven of them, there were seven fatalities that resulted from those crashes. Then on the DMV's website, it gives the number of licensed drivers, which is eleven thousand nine hundred and eighteen. And then with those numbers, you can get what they call a death rate, uh, which is zero point five nine. I think that's people per one thousand drivers. So me being a little bit of a numbers person, if you divide that, you can get that that's one person out of one thousand six hundred and ninety-five people of those licensed drivers, one person dies out of sixteen hundred. So, that's just very sobering thought for me. But in the crashes in Prince Edward County that had fatalities, there was two of them that had alcohol related to the crash. Four of them where speed was a contributing factor, and three with unrestrained drivers or passengers. So, um, I like, I like to say to share this message with your friends and your families, coworkers, anybody that you can. Cause in theory, if you reduce the contributing factors or eliminate them, then you're gonna reduce fatalities. So, um, there's a statistic that just putting your seatbelt on makes you forty-five percent more likely to survive a crash. If you're in the front seat of a car, it says. It also says if you're in the front seat of a small pickup truck, it's sixty percent more likely to survive. But I mean, there's a lot of good numbers out there to support using your seatbelt. So like, I think I said the last time I presented, sometimes people will come to me and say, like, my roads are killing people. And I kind of like take offense to that. I think a lot of these are choices that drivers make. There are, there are freak accidents where, you know, can't prevent it. But, um, oh, you know, if we control, control what we can control, we can reduce it. So, um, I'll just also say that, you know, the one thing that I have control over, there's, there's four E's to, they call it the four E's of fatalities, I think. It's on the Federal Highway Administration's website, is engineering, that's the part that VDOT does. We design roads and build them. But education plays a role in reducing fatalities, which is what I'm kind of doing tonight, telling you guys about numbers. And then enforcement, making people slow down and wear their seatbelts and not drink and drive, uh, prevents, or, you know, reduces fatalities. And then the final E is emergency response, so once a crash does occur, you know, getting the people to the hospital quicker, you know, police on the scene, EMS, that helps reduce fatalities too. So we all play a role in it, but I'm just doing what I can to get that message out there tonight. So, uh, shifting gears, uh, back to like the normal, uh, style presentation I would give on maintenance. It's kind of a brief synopsis tonight. We've been working on our rural rustics a lot lately. I was on Schoolhouse Road this morning, the brush has been cut back on that, we're doing drainage work right now. We've also been working on Bowlin Flurenoy Road and Whispering Woods Road. We're in about the same place on all three routes. Before, we're hoping to have all three of them completed before the cold weather gets here. It's our, our plan for the year. So, in the coming weeks, you'll see us start to put, adding some stone to the roads, and then after we get that done, we'll be shooting surface. The roundabout down at Hampton Sydney, uh, that's on schedule. We talk to the contractor regularly, monitor his work. But, uh, that fifty-six day closure that's in on the Route one thirty-three leg that leads over to Hampton Sydney College, that detour is scheduled to come out August first, and they say they're gonna make it, so, uh, we'll see. So that's really all I had to report on tonight. The final thing I'll say is I've been talking to traffic engineering a lot about the four sixty-three oh seven, like that intersection where we've had a lot of crashes. And, uh, they're looking right now at reflective paint for the islands and putting in some like, some people call them hip post, or, they're really called a bollard, but like, it's about a hip height, uh, reflective post to, to lead up to it, to help people realize that that lane is gonna turn off towards three oh seven. We've also been talking about maybe in the future, like, prior to the paving job that's gonna come next year out there, if we're still seeing issues after we do the reflective devices, maybe just putting everybody over in the left lane prior to the intersection. So there won't be a way to mess that up if you're already moved over. And then you'll be able to go through, and that three oh seven leg will merge back in, you'll have two lanes again. We're, we're trying to figure out the best way to mitigate and reduce what's going on out there. So I just thought I'd share that with you. If you guys have any comments or concerns, I'll open it up to you guys now.
Plenty of trees to cut back.
Yeah, we do have a lot that are growing like crazy.
There was one, I believe, Lou, you may have passed this one along to me, uh, it's a high school road. There was some brush growing into the right of way on a turn. Staff from VDOT called me this week. They've cut as far over as the property owner would allow them, but they were off feet on right of way. So next time you get out there, take a look at it. But it sounds like your staff done as much as they could do
Right.
on, on your right of way and, and.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, if, a lot of our secondary roads just have a thirty-foot prescriptive easement, so it's, doesn't give you a whole lot of room to, to cut stuff back. Sometimes if it's something the site distance related, we can work with the property owner on an easement agreement to, to cut back further. So, sounds like my staff's handling it well, so thank you. Any, anything else? David?
Uh, Chair, yes, Scott, this is David. Brush on Oliver Road and Port County Road is, is really bad, would affect that.
Okay.
And also on our special plan, I have received too much of calls from every resident on, uh, think of down road that asked if it'd be taken apart, the sheer plan as far as, uh, baby.
Okay.
Just, just to let you know.
All right, well, yeah, we can certainly look at that when we do our next work session, see if we would want to shift that funding somewhere else, if, if that would be the board's pleasure.
Yeah, put it down so that we can bring it back up, but I've, I've gotten, uh, well, for twenty, twenty calls in that.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick, a question?
Definitely.
Scott, when you were speaking on the four sixty-three oh seven interchange, I, I didn't hear you mention anything about the request from both sheriff and the Board of Supervisors about consideration for the forty-five mile an hour speed zone. Is that?
That's, yeah, I submitted that.
Least favorite option, I take it?
I won't say least favorite. I submitted that back, I think the last time I was speaking here, I said that I had submitted it. And it's like about a ninety to a hundred and twenty day turnaround on those. If they, if they, I don't say, I will, they look at everything through the same lens, and if it warrants doing it, then they'll do it. Too early to tell for me at the moment.
Thank you.
Scott, I just want to thank you and Bill Keen for meeting me out on Bowlin Flurenoy Road last week.
Oh, yeah, no problem at all.
Appreciate your cooperation with delaying on this.
Yes, sir, thank you for having us out there. It was, that was a beneficial meeting, like, looking at making a site distance problem go on the way out there, so that's gonna be a good thing.
Scott, one other concern. The rerouting of one thirty-three across from Worsham Grocery. On the right-hand side of that road, there is a serious pothole. And I forget it every time I go over, but it is terrible. That needs to be addressed.
It's on one thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
On the, on the rerouting.
Okay, right there by six oh four, one thirty-three?
Yes, but it's right at the beginning
Okay.
of the highway.
Okay.
And also on Douglas Church Road that joins off Carter. there is a serious hole to the right. I've addressed that before. But water collects in it, and I just don't think it's been addressed.
Okay, so Douglas Church at Carter?
Yes, right, right at the Carter exit onto Douglas Church to the right.
Okay.
Thank you much.
No problem. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, got one more.
Yes.
Scott, right there where they're working on the roundabout at Kingsville. When you're at the Exxon with, with the truck and trailer, whatever, when you try to go out, you can't see south because of all the barricade signs. You have to pull over into the road with the vehicle before you can see that way. Maybe they can turn them a little bit or.
Yeah, maybe scoot some of them to, yeah, I get what you're saying. I'll mention that to them tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you.
Scott, what about the trees growing up around the bridges on the outside, the, above the?
Yeah, that's something we normally use the inmate labor to cut that back at bridges. Uh, so it's like we were talking about a second ago, brush is growing so fast right now at this time of year, but.
Is that the VDOT, is that the crew from out of, out of Burkeville from the work center?
Yeah, the, the crew that, Mr. Carrington runs.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's the one that would do that.
It needs some attention on the, uh, Mount Pleasant and New Bethel Road on the, at those bridges.
Okay.
And it's, and the one on, uh, Bressaw near three sixty?
Yes.
Near the dumpster site?
All the usual suspects, it sounds like. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we'll do that. We've, we've been keeping our boomaxes running in like every area headquarters I have. Some of them have two and they, we're kind of mow, using them in a pattern, working our way through everything, trying to get all the brush that's creeping out cut back. Uh, it's just, I think a poplar tree, I looked it up one time, it grows like eight feet in a year, like the branches. Cut them way back to get, keep them from encroaching on it. So, yeah, well, I got these ones wrote down.
I know they've done the, the mowing, they just need to take care of it around the bridges.
Okay, got you. Yeah, we'll get that. Thank you, board.
Scott, just one other comment. Thanks for your detailed reports tonight. You, you're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
You guys have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
You too.
You too.
Go into public hearings by the time I get, by the time I read the public hearing, the seventh third.
The time has arrived for a public hearing. Of the first of public hearing, the board of supervisors will receive input on the disposition of the county-owned scope building located at five oh five Griffin Boulevard, Farmville, Virginia, pursuant to the county's procedure for disposition of surplus real property. Mr. Stanley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, pursuant to our county policy adopted October ninth, two thousand and seven, whenever the board of supervisors of Prince Edward County, Virginia, deemed it in the best interest of the citizens of the county disposed of any surplus real property owned by the county, the board shall first conduct a public hearing prior to the disposition. After the public hearing and upon affirmative vote of a majority of the members of the board, the property shall be declared surplus and shall be advertised for sale. The county shall also obtain an appraisal of value of the property and shall accept no bid, which is less than the appraisal value. Uh, building official Philip Moore completed a courtesy inspection of the scope building prior to allowing rental of the building to the general public or reuse by Piedmont Senior Resources for providing meals to the public. After inspection, Philip has determined the building cannot function safely for public gatherings. The rear of the building has significant rot in the crawl space, which has caused settling of the floor. Based on his inspection, I have suspended rental of the building. The Meals on Wheels office in the front of the building can still be utilized. Based on previous discussions with the properties committee, we have obtained an appraisal of the building to propose offering the building for sale to the public in lieu of renovating and correcting the building issues. Rather than reinvest and renovate the scope building, it is felt that investing in a larger facility with more parking, like the Mary E. Branch Building, would be a better use of county funds. The scope building was purchased by the county via vote of the board on April sixth, two thousand and ten to expand recreational opportunities for senior citizens. The scope building has since been used by the Meals on Wheels program, Piedmont Senior Resources, by a number of church groups over the years, and for rent to various citizens for a place for birthday parties, family get-togethers, et cetera. In talking with staff, the building was used two to six times on average per month. We have met with representatives of the NAACP who have indicated concerns with the county disposing of the property and not fixing the property up for its intended use. As part of a previous agreement, the county is responsible for providing office space for Meals on Wheels. We're currently looking for options, including, excuse me, talking with DSS and STEPS to possibly provide space in their building. If we're, uh, if we were to work with STEPS, it would give STEPS a credit on their rent paid to offset, uh, the square footage. Uh, if the board is inclined to do so, the property can be declared surplus and advertised for sale not less than once a week for four consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation to the county and either Richmond Times Dispatch or Lynchburg News in advance for two consecutive weeks. The county's procedure for disposal of real property dictates the county shall sell the property by public auction and not within seven days of the last date of advertisement. Excuse me, the board does have the ability to deviate from all or any of this procedure upon unanimous vote of the members present. So included as attachments is the adopted, uh, procedure for disposition of surplus real property, a parcel report on the property, the board of supervisors' minutes regarding, uh, the scope building, and the staff recommendations that the board deviate from its procedure for disposition of surplus property and advertise to offer the scope building for sale by sealed bid and only to require advertisement in the Farmville Herald. Uh, and we have advertised the public hearing tonight.
At this time, do we have speakers or anyone who would like to comment on this? And, and while we are deciding this, uh, we received an email from Benetta Watkins on today who is very, very concerned about this building. Um, David, would you like to make a comment?
This night, can you hear me, Ms. Price?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, on that, on that building, we, I have to be the one who carries myself and put Jim along while we're there. I had several meetings in there back, we were doing all this stuff, and the building is in terrible shape. I have not talked to Benetta personally, but I have talked to some other people and they understand just exactly the condition of that building and the, the park and everything else. And I, I asked, I did meet earlier today, I asked the other members of the baseball. They said they understand it's still being poor themselves, understood the fact the building was beyond repair. That's where, that's where I stand on it. Like I say, I have talked to Benetta this week and related events, but she has not contacted me directly.
Um, I would like to read Benetta's email, and I feel certain she won't mind me reading it. It says, dear board members, I am writing to express my concern regarding the disposition of the scope building located on Griffin Boulevard. The building has been historically important in the community, especially to the African-American citizens. It concerns me that it would be lost and the struggles that led to its erection be forgotten. It would be extremely unfortunate for this piece of history to be lost. I am suggesting that this matter be tabled and additional study be conducted. Thank you for your consideration, Ms. Benetta Watkins. And as I talk with her, I explained the conditions of the building and so forth, and she understood. But, um, she wanted to send this communication as well, and thanks for your comments, David. Anyone else with a comment? We will close this meeting and go to the next public hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, is there any, we don't have to take action tonight. There's a couple suggested motions there. You could either table it to a future meeting if you desire to do so, uh, or there's a, a draft motion there to, to advertise it. And see if there is any interest, I guess.
Board members, what would you like to do?
Well, the property committee, we met earlier today, tonight rather, and we had met prior to that. The building is just too far gone. It would cost an extreme amount of money. Parking, there's a, a challenge with parking. Uh, it's just, it's just a bad location and it's a bad investment. Uh, and it's too, it's going to cost a lot of money to get that, bring that building back up to, to code and, and where it need to be. So my vote was to continue the path of having it sold. That's just me.
Okay.
I will agree. And also, there's a lot of mold and mildew in the building. Uh, during the cares committee, we sit through there in that building. And I'm telling you, it really made us sick. We did not feel well. So it's not just a structural part of it, and there's the possibility of you becoming ill from mold and mildew as well. And, you know, I know that it means a lot to a lot of people, but by the same token, we have a lot of capital improvements in our counter that are going on, and we cannot afford to invest in that building as well.
Okay, Jerry, if you would repeat your motion.
So I'll make a motion that the, uh, uh, said property be advertised for scope building for sale and sealed bid and to only require advertisement in the Farmville Herald at this time.
Second. Okay, it's been motioned in second that the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors pursuant to the county's procedure for disposition of surplus real property declare the scope building as surplus property and advertise the property for sale by sealed, sealed bid once a week for four consecutive weeks in the Farmville Herald and on the county's website. Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
David.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
Yes.
Thank you so much. So it has been moved. Okay, the second is an ordinance amendment to amend and reordain Appendix B of the Prince Edward County Code Zoning, Section three point one hundred dash eleven to provide the general standards of development for meatpacking and related industries. Mr. Love, are you going to address it? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, if you remember, uh, back a few months ago, we had a special use permit for meat, for a meat slaughter facility over in the Dalton Heights community, which drew a lot of public interest. The, we looked at the county ordinances, we did require a special use permit, but there were no standards of development like we have for other types of uses. Um, so county staff, myself, and county administrator looked at what other localities do. And we, we crafted, uh, a draft ordinance that we, uh, sent to the planning commission and let them review. Uh, they had a, a public hearing, uh, and some comment, well, they had comments on the, the draft. Uh, subsequent to that, we advertised a public hearing. And they met at their June twenty-first meeting. No one spoke either for or against, uh, this proposed amendment. Uh, we did share this proposed, these proposed development standards with the, uh, former applicant, uh, Mr. Seku Abdu Sabar. Um, if you're aware that he is seeking to locate his facility in a, uh, industrial zone now from the IDA. Uh, so he did have input, uh, into the draft as it was going to the planning commission. And this, none of this will impede, uh, his operation or his intended use. Uh, it does set forth, uh, best management practices, uh, that will help in the design of that site. Um, and if we ever do have another application, uh, this would put more distance. If you look at the standards, we've got spacing from, uh, public facilities and residential structures, that would give, uh, neighboring landowners of any type, future application, a, a level of, uh, protection. The planning commission did meet and recommended, uh, that this be, uh, approved, and since it's been advertising the Farmville Herald for your meeting tonight, we've had no public comments either for or against this, uh, proposed ordinance amendment. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have of me.
Does anybody have a question or comment for me? Okay, thank you so much. I now declare that closed. Moving to item eleven on the agenda.
Actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need, um, so Rob, if you can open the public hearing, I don't know if there's anybody signed up, but just give an opportunity to speak on that item, Madam Chair.
Does anybody desire to speak on that? Okay, could we have a motion to close this?
I move that the board of supervisors approve the ordinance amendment to amend and reordain Appendix B of the Prince Edward County Code Zoning, Section three dash one zero zero dot one one to be held at the June twenty-first, twenty-second regular board meeting of the planning commission.
Second. It's been motioned in second that the board of supervisors approve the ordinance amendment to amend and reordain Appendix B of the Prince Edward County Code Zoning, Section three point one hundred dash eleven to be held at the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the planning commission.
That's a typo.
It's a typo.
Okay.
So just, the sentence will end at the end of section three dash one hundred point one one, correct, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rob. Okay, has it been motioned in second?
Yes.
Yes. Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
I'm definitely yes. So moved. Thank you so much. Public hearing officially closed. Moving to item eleven. Community partners update, the Department of Social Services, Ms. Kimberly Allen here, the director?
Yes.
Thank you, dear. How are you?
Good. Madam Chair and board, it's good to be before you tonight. Don't have anything major to report from social services, but I did want to highlight a few areas of interest and some challenges that we're facing right now. Reported before in numerous meetings, we are, um, in the midst of our cooling, uh, energy assistance program right now. It started June fifteenth and it runs through August fifteenth. And our workers have, uh, processed about three hundred applications to this point. That doesn't include a list of pre-approved homes that was created by the Virginia Department of Social Services and trickled down to us. Um, and this is also in addition to the monthly average of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty applications for SNAP, Medicaid, temporary assistance for needy families, and childcare applications that we receive each month. So there's a lot of good work being done by our benefits unit. Um, some of the public health emergency impacts that the benefits unit specifically is seeing, um, is we have continuous enrollment for Medicaid recipients, and that means they're going to maintain their coverage through the public health emergency. At this point, the Virginia Department of Social Services has not given us any indication of when that public health emergency will be lifted. Um, they believe it will last at least through midterm elections and likely into early twenty twenty-three. Um, so those folks that are on Medicaid will continue their enrollment and they will get notice, um, if and when that changes. Um, I've reported this a couple of times in front of this board that we're just playing this waiting game. And, um, while it's unfortunate that we're kind of in limbo, it's actually a good thing because it's allowed our agency to really tweak our plans for how we're going to address the influx of all these Medicaid renewals. So we're grateful for this extra time to be prepared. Um, the other impact is the emergency allotments through the public health emergency. So SNAP recipients, our food stamp recipients, they get an extra allotment for the maximum benefit of food stamps, um, each month. And that will continue throughout the public health emergency plus one month post ending the public health emergency. Um, one of the negative things that we're seeing as a result of the public health emergency in regards to benefits is our participation rate in our Virginia initiative for, um, education and work. So our view participation right now is completely voluntary. Normally, it is a mandated program if you're a TANF recipient. Right now, our participation rate is at four point three percent. So we have four point three percent of recipients completing either work or education programs. Pre-pandemic, it was as high as eighty percent participation. Um, so that is a struggle for us. We are struggling to get people to buy into this whole concept of going back to work, being prepared for when this public health emergency ends and the benefits cliff happens. Um, so those are some challenges that they're facing. They're also facing a number of network issues with their primary program that they work with. The ACMS is our main, um, IT program that we use for case management and the workers. And the workers are facing multiple outages a day. This is on the network side at VDSS, so it'll go down for five minutes, 10 minutes, it may even go down for two hours during the day. So it's downtime for them. It's very frustrating, and it creates a backlog of work. So we are trying to combat that. The Virginia Department of Social Services is trying to combat that. They went to the General Assembly and asked for a new program, funding for a new program, and it was declined. So the workers will continue to use this program as best they can, but it definitely creates worker frustration. And that leads to, you know, retention issues and things like that within the workplace, which I'm gonna address at the end of this. In regards to our services program, the focus has been on prevention efforts on both sides of the fence, from child protective services and adult protective services. So our numbers right now, as far as referrals each month, are steady, but our validation rates are pretty low. But what we are doing to combat that, and so we can be in the community and we can be involved, is by opening prevention cases. So we're utilizing funding sources like our Safe and Stable Families Grant. We're utilizing CSA funds for families and children to make referrals for that, to go out and, and address these families, get in the homes, be able to assess the situation, and provide support. I would like to think that our family services unit is one of the best in the business. They use the family engagement model that has been passed down from the Virginia Department of Social Services over the last couple of years. They do an excellent job to create buy-in with these families. So a CPS referral comes in, it's not valid on our end, but we go and knock on a door and say, hey, look, there's some concerns with your family, and I know nobody wants DSS to show up on your door, but we can help. There's a lot of ways we can help. We can provide financial assistance. We can advocate for you. We can provide service coordination. We can provide referral networks, that sort of thing. And most people accept our help because of that engagement and that piece of it. It not only helps the families and children directly, but it also creates this kinship-first culture, which is what the state is pushing. We want children, families, individuals to be connected with their families. They know each other best, rather than having DSS dictate what goes on in their life. So it's, it's this whole concept of family partnership and family engagement. The provision, the prevention efforts not only help, like I said, the specific individuals and families, but they also help us as an agency to build our partnerships with our community stakeholders. So our court services unit, our schools, crossroads, private providers, residential facilities, and things like that, we have expanded through the last couple of years and partnered with those folks and built and strengthened relationships. And we still have a long way to go, but we think we have the right people in place that will keep that, that effort going. And lastly, just some overall concerns moving forward. I mentioned retention. Our agency has overall seen a decrease in applications for employment. So when we have vacancies in our office, the number of applicants is dwindling. And we just had a presentation on this, you know, social services, human services is a dying field, unfortunately. The numbers at colleges and universities is dwindling of people engaging in social work programs and things like that. And a lot of it is due to typically lower wages than the private sector has to offer. It also is related to secondary trauma that workers are faced with each and every day when they are subjected to abuse and neglect situations, or reliving the traumas of their clients. And so that is definitely driving people away. The other thing that's driving people away is not being able to compete with the private sector in regards to non-traditional work schedules, teleworking options, and things like that. So we are really struggling with that. The Department of Social Services at the state level understands that. You have agencies across the state that have anywhere from 30 to 50% vacancy rates in some of their departments. Fortunately, we don't see that significant of vacancy rates, but it's definitely an issue. And we're finding it harder and harder to find qualified individuals who wanna work and that can get the job done. So just a few points to ponder on and think about. I would love to hear from any of you if you have suggestions or ideas on what we can do to engage folks. One of the things that I would like to do is partner with our community colleges and Longwood Social Work Program, human services departments, and things like that, to see if we can't provide some insight to them, be a part of their programs, and try to build up the field as best we can. Anybody have any questions?
So, so what initiatives or partnerships do you have with the schools? Now, school would be starting very, very soon. What are you doing?
So we have a new intake worker who is very seasoned. She's a 12-year veteran from Chesterfield DSS. And her primary function there was to provide mandated reporter training to the schools and to connect with them and be a kind of a point of contact when there's issues and things like that. So she has reached out to the schools and tried to do, coordinate mandated reporter trainings for the in-service, teacher in-service at the beginning of the year. We've been successful with that in the past at varying schools, but we wanna do it division-wide, so we're hopeful that they will agree to that. A lot of our family services workers have made physical connections with the administrators in the buildings at the end of last school year or second semester. So we're really trying to do that, and we're trying to have Ms. Parker, who is our intake worker, really, really facilitate and build those. We did that with crossroads, and we've had tremendous success the last couple of months doing trainings for them, getting to know faces, and being in their buildings and being with their employees. So we're hopeful the more that we have face time with the folks in the school that we'll have a reciprocal relationship and be able to communicate and exchange information a lot more freely than has been in the past.
Any other comments or questions? Could not count. We thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a good night.
At this time, we hear from Ms. Justine Young, Executive Director of Piedmont Senior Resources.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you very much for having me come down again this evening. I'd like to start off tonight with a very brief overview of the agency. We are, of course, a nonprofit, but we are an arm in many ways of the government. We do receive the majority of our funding from the federal government, and then we receive about a quarter from the state government. And the rest is money that either the counties contribute or that we raise through fundraising or for different projects that we do. When I first went to PSR, our budget was about $1.3 million. Today, our budget currently this year is about $2.8 million. We have grown incredibly in the last few years. And I want to point out that we got during COVID, because the federal government recognizes area agencies on aging nationwide as very valuable partners, we actually received $1.5 million during this whole COVID episode, which we have to spend between when we got it and 2024. And the point I wanna make with that is that money came to our community. Without the AAA, you wouldn't have gotten that $1.5 million extra dollars dumped into this community. So it is a real benefit to all of the counties that we serve to have us to be able to get that additional funding. And that would happen probably in any major type of emergency, not just this. We're also eligible for other funding with floods and different natural emergencies that happen. We get additional funding. So, but while I make that point, I also want to say that that has nothing to do with the 10% we're required to match locally. So no matter how much money they give us, they still want our 10% local match. But with this COVID funding, we have been able to do so many additional projects in the past two years and in the upcoming year. We have hired more employees who are now out in the field and able to do so much more work with citizens. One of the projects or one of the special fundings that we got was to hire a community health worker and a nurse to go door-to-door, basically, as needed, to help people deal with COVID, whether that was trying to get them to go get the vaccination or trying to help them with long COVID post-hospitalization or trying to help them deal with family members who lived in the same home. So this community health worker is available. If you all know any families who need someone to come to the home and talk to them about all these matters, that's what she's there for. So while doing that, however, COVID is the way in the door with this particular funding stream that she's being paid from. But while she's there, she will be assessing the needs, like stairs that are falling in, floors that are caving in, the need for grab bars in the bathroom. All of this dealing, of course, with seniors because that's what we serve. But these are the types of things this additional funding has allowed us to do. The nurse is a part-time person who's overseeing this full-time community health worker, and that is for the additional questions that may come up that are much more medical in nature. Most of you know I am also a nurse, but with everything else that is going on and because of the funding we got, I still needed to hire a nurse, which is difficult to hire anyone in this day and age, as we've just heard. So I was very fortunate to find somebody who could take that position. But that is one of the big things that I think is very important right now. The other thing I wanted to bring to you tonight, instead of numbers, which is what I've typically done, is to give you a few examples of what my staff have been dealing with for the last several months. So one of the things is home repairs, and I've mentioned that before. We had a 76-year-old client who had not taken a bath in seven years. She only did sponge baths because she was afraid she would fall in the bathroom. This is very typical of seniors. And as a nurse who worked in the ICU for 17 years, I can tell you, most of the broken hips we had were seniors who fell in the bathroom. So we got a walk-in shower installed for her, and she is thrilled. She is finally able to take a shower instead of just doing a sponge bath and no longer afraid of falling. And of course, we installed the appropriate grab bars in that walk-in shower, so she won't slip and fall while in there. Another client had called us. Her trailer was 100 degrees. You all know that trailers, a little bit different than houses, have a tendency to heat up like crazy. People who live in them cannot stay there without AC, and we are headed into 100-degree weather this week. These people need air conditioning. We have a grant that we get from Dominion Power every year that pays for air conditioning units for us to put in homes and mobile homes. This is life-saving for somebody, you know, if you're 90 years old and you're sitting there in 105, 110-degree trailer, you're likely going to die. So these are necessities, especially for those who live alone and don't have help. So I wanna make sure everyone knows that we have air conditioners available right now. If you know a senior who needs one, please have them contact us, because we want to get them all out while they need to be used. I also wanted to tell you that our friendship cafes, which were closed for the last two years due to COVID, are reopening. We did reopen the one that was at the Scope Building. We have moved that to the Farmville United Methodist Church. And the number of people coming, and I'm sure this has to do with the condition of the building we were in before, but we have tripled the attendance. All of a sudden, it was like people just started pouring in. And that is now the largest gathering we have for our seven counties, and it looks like it's continuing to grow. We recently got a grant for pet care through Meals on Wheels of America. This is available to all of our counties. We, for the first time, we have gotten grants for pet food. And I know people laugh about this, but for a senior who has no one, who lives alone, that pet is the only source of affection they have and love that they get. And so these pets are crucial to their mental well-being. And we have tried, we've gotten pet food grants, but never veterinary care grants. And we've gone to some of these homes, and these animals have mange, they have health problems, they need treatment, and there was nothing we could do. Finally, we got a grant to take care of that as well. I also want to update you on our non-emergency medical transportation program. PSR is a very small area agency on aging in comparison to those across the United States. Last week, Jordan Miles and I were in Austin, Texas for the annual Area Agency on Aging Conference, which is now US Aging. We were asked to do a presentation on our non-emergency medical transportation program because they wanted an agency from a rural area who had started the program from scratch and built it up. And they wanted us to give basically a how-to manual. And so that is the presentation that we did. Also, while we were there, for the second year in a row, we received an award from US Aging. The first one was for our non-emergency medical transportation program last year. This year, we've received it for our virtual programming, which is, again, a grant-funded program where we, a lot of this had to do with COVID funding. For our seniors who are no longer able to come to our nutrition sites because of COVID, we purchased iPads that we were able to give them, we were able to show them, teach them how to use them. And we now have sessions. We have exercise sessions that are done through that. We have education sessions that are done through that, and they get to communicate with others through that iPad that they didn't have before. And, you know, a lot of these people had no idea even how to use it, how to turn it on. So that's been a wonderful program for us. I wanted to go back to, so that award, well, also, the awards, they only give 36 a year, 36. There are over 1,000 agencies in the United States. So for two years in a row, we have been one of the 36 who got an award, and I think that's a big deal. So as far as non-emergency medical transportation, and we give you another example. We had a client who was fortunate enough to get a heart transplant at VCU. We were able to transport him from sheltering arms rehab in Richmond and take him and his wife to the VCU residence, where they are temporarily staying so that he can get the necessary tests, et cetera, to make sure he'll be okay to go home. He is scheduled to return to his residence next week. Because he is now in a wheelchair, his wife will need ongoing help with transportation, which we will provide, until he is able strong enough to get into their personal vehicle with her assistance. She's just not physically able to help him, but so much, again, dealing with seniors. So we have been, you know, I think it's a wonderful thing. We've been able to help this man who had a heart transplant be able to come back home. So also, I wanna tell you a little bit about, we had a patient, or patient client. I get, sometimes get my previous nursing mixed up with my current career. We had a client who let his Part D lapse. What that means is he no longer had coverage for his medications. This gentleman was a diabetic. His medications, if he doesn't have insurance, cost about $5,000 a year. He does not have the money to pay for that. There was no way. And as a nurse, I remember patients repeatedly coming to the ICU in, in a diabetic coma and things of that nature because they couldn't afford their medications. So what happened with this man was April worked with him and was able to get him another Part D program, which actually, and sometimes they refuse to let you do it because you've lapsed, okay? So that's a big issue. Left on his own, he would not have accomplished this. April was able to get him another Part D program. It was $35 a month less than the one he was on previously, and now all of his meds will be covered. So we're really excited about that. We also, we had a client in, who, out of the goodness of her heart, she let her ex-husband come back to stay with her because he was homeless. We do actually have these situations happen a lot around here. So while she was in the hospital with COVID, he invited all his friends over. These are seniors, so I thought this was a little odd to me. But anyway, apparently, they had quite a party. And much of her home was destroyed. Her furniture was destroyed. There was smoke damage, and it was filthy, apparently. She had to throw everything away when she got home from the hospital. Our volunteers, through our volunteer program, had been working on this and have been able to provide her with all new furniture. She doesn't, she can't afford it. They've gotten her new furniture, got her all set up, got everything cleaned up, taken care of. But this is another example. This isn't covered under any of our funding. This is something we did. Our volunteer network reached out to all of their people and said, can you donate this? Can you donate that? Can we do this to a business? Can you come in and clean the floors? You know, would you donate part of it or any of it? And so this is the kind of thing we do all of the time for folks. Want to talk a little bit about, this story is really horrible. We had a client, and this is this week. She's been without electricity for over a week now. In order to turn her lights back on, she only has to pay $425, which I know does not seem like a lot, but her income is $1,000 a month. Unfortunately, and, and we did talk to STEPS, we work a lot with a lot of the other organizations, of course, and STEPS has a program to pay electric bills. They agreed to pay 300 of it. So we don't normally pay electric bills because STEP does that, but I said we will happily pay the other $125. So we were taking care of that to get her lights turned back on. But here's the background of the story. This is a Prince Edward County resident whose son has been living with her. He handles all of her finances. He hasn't worked in a long, long time. He's also a drug addict. All of his friends are over there with him. This woman is a double amputee and is wheelchair-bound. She is helpless in her own home. He, when the power got turned off, left and moved in with his girlfriend and left her there alone with no electricity. So we're taking care of this. We provide meals to her. We're, you know, we're, we're doing all these things. But what I wanna say is, again, this is typical of the kind of cases we deal with, and I'm sure social services deals with every day as well. But we fill in a lot of the cracks that social services can't because of the red tape and regulations with, with government agencies, whereas we are still a private nonprofit, even though we're government-funded. So that's what I wanted to share with you tonight, just some of the stories, the real human stories of what goes on every day at our office.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we did take care of that referral you gave to me. Signed the check, I think, last several days.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you for the referral.
You do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Justine, in terms of the air conditions, do the people come there to pick them up, or do you deliver? do you deliver?
Well, we used to have them come there, and we used to deliver, but we have gotten much smarter, and we have figured out that if you order them from Walmart, they deliver them direct to the door, and we don't have to do any of that. With the price of gas, everything we do, we're looking at cost-effectiveness. So, if, now, if they can't put it in, and they let us know they don't have anybody to help them, we will, of course, go help. But typically, they can find a neighbor or somebody who will at least put the AC unit in for them. Also, when they call us, we can find out what size AC unit they need. You know, it's, we only provide one, and so, do they want it in their bedroom, or do they want it in their living room? And so, then that'll make a difference on, you know, if we know the square roughly, most people don't know the square footage, but we kind of just have to ask a lot of questions and get a good idea of the size. So, yes, sir.
Good lady, it was a double amputee. Did you get the checkbook away from the son?
We have turned this over to Legal Aid. We also partner with Legal Aid, of course, and we are asking Legal Aid to step in and take action. So, yes, we will stay on this. We are very persistent, and that kind of thing infuriates me, so, yeah.
And the senior citizen that you refurbished the home?
Yes.
And she left the ex-husband back in, where did he go?
Oh, I don't know, but he's not there. And hopefully, she'll be smart enough not to repeat that.
She had to throw everything away.
I hope she threw him out with the furniture. Yeah. Now, we know why he was her ex-husband to begin with. Yeah.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
Great job, Justin. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate all of that. Wow. Okay. Next on the agenda, the Virginia American Revolution 250 Commission, Mr. Stanley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, America 250 is a multi-year effort to commemorate the semi-quintcentennial or the 250th anniversary of the United States. The effort's being led at the national level by nonpartisan U.S. Semi-Quintcentennial Commission created by Congress and supporting nonprofit America 250 Foundation with the mission to catalyze the more perfect union by designing and leading the most comprehensive and inclusive celebration in our country's history. America 250 represents a coalition of public and private partners, all working to create initiatives and programs that honor our first 250 years and inspire Americans to imagine our next 250. The commemoration period began in 2020, culminates on July 4, 2026, and officially concludes in 2027. The Virginia American Revolution Commission was created by the General Assembly for the purpose of planning for and commemorating the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in the American Revolution, Revolutionary War, and the formation of the nation. Planning for this statewide and national event has already begun and culminates in 2026 and then continuing beyond. Each locality has been asked to form a local 250th committee to begin planning for the multi-year commemoration period. The state commission will provide grant opportunities and technical support to local committees. In your packet is a copy of the Virginia American Resolution, Revolution 250 Commission outline and a sample resolution for consideration by the board. The recommendation is that the board approve the request to designate Chelsea White, our Economic Development Tourism Director, as Prince Edward's liaison to work with the Virginia American Revolution 250 Commission and adopt a resolution of support to later form a committee to aid in the planning for the commemoration period. I'd say, don't get too scared. I mean, obviously, I think you'll have some counties that'll do a lot and some that'll do a little, but I think it's something that we certainly want to participate in, particularly if, you know, if there's some funding from the state that we can do something locally or regionally to be involved in, it'd be nice to participate in that.
Good. Second. Okay. It's a motion in second. As the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors, initiate Chelsea White as Prince Edward's liaison to work with the Virginia American Revolution 250 Commission and to adopt the attached revolution. All of us in favor? David.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Lou.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved.
So, tomorrow, I get to surprise Chelsea and tell her she picked up another job.
She'll do a fine job.
She'll do a great job.
Item 13 on the agenda, the Prince Edward Business Park Access Road Construction Bid Award.
So, let me just say, before I jump into this, but this is one of those projects I got to inherit when I got here the first week, and a feeling like we're finally getting to a point where we can get this done. Joyce is out there. How long have y'all been talking about this at the IDA, Joyce? Quite a number of years. So, the county's been working to develop an internal access road to the Prince Edward County Industrial Park Off Commerce Road. The road is necessary to gain, you say the back 60, in total, there's over 100 acres associated with the industrial park that would be accessed, that's currently landlocked. Construction will include 1,500 feet of road built to state standards for acceptance into the VDOT road system, which will also include a water line. The sewer line is actually backed by the creek in the back, which this project will cross. The board previously authorized application for various Tobacco Commission grants. The county was awarded $328,395, $49,080, $194,485, $117,167, for a total of $689,127 from the Tobacco Commission. Over the last year, we've been scrambling, having to get extensions for these grants because we'd long since run out of time to get these completed. Each of those grants requires a one-to-one match, which can be matched with VDOT funds. Again, the county has a platform, received extensions on three of those grants that required extensions, the fourth was the new grant. September 2019, the board passed a resolution in support of the county's application for a $650,000 VDOT Economic Development Access Road Grant. In January 2020, the county was awarded the maximum of $650,000 by the Commonwealth Transportation Board. $150,000, that amount must be matched by the county. As previously discussed, to receive the grant funds, the county had to provide a letter of credit to the full amount of $500,000 plus the $150 payable to VDOT, which shall only be utilized if the lots are not filled with qualifying capital investment within five years of the request for funds. There's the possibility of a four-year extension after the five years is over, in which the county would reimburse VDOT every year that amount of 20% per year. If the county does not secure capital investment, the county would, during that time, the county would get all the money back. The unmatched funds from VDOT can be used as part of the matching funds for the Tobacco Commission. In collaboration with VDOT, the county established an overall project budget of $2,97,111 at the time of the agreement in 2020. The county VDOT agreement stipulates the county is responsible, all project costs beyond the $650,000 grant amount. The total Tobacco Commission, again, can be matched with 500 of VDOT, and that left a $189,127 match for the county for the Tobacco Commission and $150,000 match for the county from VDOT. The total at that time was $339,127. So, since the project budget was established in 2020, the county has completed engineering, permitting, property acquisition, and various tasks necessary to prepare the project for construction. If you remember, we had the SNAFU where we had a 60-foot right-of-way that was reserved when the county sold VDOT, the land, to build the VDOT shop, but what the county did not, and the engineer did not guide the county on leaving, was the necessary slope and drainage easements to accommodate the ditches and everything else outside the right-of-way and the construction easement. So, the county, through the IDA, had to go to Tri-Borough shelving to negotiate for additional right-of-way to be able to shift that over, and that's what the IDA's been working on for the last 12 or so months. So, summaries of the total project budget and funding sources are included here in the packet. As shown, the total revenue from the Tobacco Commission and VDOT is $1,389,127. Selectness of the overall project budget now of $2,784,923 leaves the county with an estimate of $1,395,796 in total expenditures for the project. It sounds like a lot, but let me say this. The fact that the budget has only gone up as much as it has over the last two years, and given the fact that we're fuel prices, which are driving pretty much everything in the construction and asphalt market, I think we feel pretty good with the numbers. Essentially, the county's putting 50 cents on the dollar for this project, which is still good. Initially, the county was probably putting a third in. Tobacco Commission was putting in a third, and VDOT a third. With, the longer this project has drawn out, the more the cost has gone up. It's only going to draw out more if you wait. And again, if you, if you divide, you know, if I sit here and say, okay, what is that? At the end of the day, what does this really worth to the county? Take that 1.3 million dollars, just divide to 100, it's 13,000 per acre. For land that is industrial property, certainly would be worth 30, 40-plus thousand dollars per acre. So, I think it's a good investment. It's getting utilities and road access to the property. If you look at the three bids we received, the range in value from low bid from JR Kaski Inc. of $1,998,682 to a high bid of $2,168,854 from Haynes Brothers, you're talking about a 4% spread. That's an extremely tight bid. We feel very good, both with the estimate that Timmons had provided and with the bid spread. So, at this time, it's, staff's recommendation is to award the lump-sum bid of $1,998,682 in the unit prices, except those that the engineer has recommended rejecting with JR Kaski Inc., and include a 10% contingency amount for any unnecessary change orders. We will have to move some money from fund balance at the end of the day to cover. Y'all anticipated doing that anyway, it's just a little bit more, but I think if this is a, this is, we spent quite a bit in engineering to get to this point, but we're also in danger of losing our Tobacco Commission grants, the VDOT grants ultimately. So, it's, I think it's, we don't really have a choice but to move forward. But I think it is, it's, you have to look at it as an investment in the future of Prince Edward County, an investment in economic development, the ability to create jobs and investment at the industrial park, and lastly, to actually get this off the table and get it moving. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from any of the board members?
No.
No. I think we've been working on this for quite a while. So, I moved it, Board of Supervisors award the lump sum contract for $1,998,682 to JR Kaski Inc., and include a 10% contingency amount for any necessary change orders for the construction of the access road at the Prince Edward County Business Park as outlined. A further move to authorize the county administrator to sign the contract with JR Kaski Inc., rejecting those change order pieces prices as recommended by the engineer, and authorize any necessary change orders in the amount up to 10% of the total project cost.
Second. Okay, a motion has been made in second, that the Board of Supervisors award of the lump sum contract for $1,998,682 to JR Kaski Incorporated, and include a 10% contingency amount for any necessary change orders for the construction of the access road at the Prince Edward County Business Park as outlined. A further move to authorize the county administrator to sign the contract with JR Kaski Incorporated, rejecting these change order prices as recommended by the engineer, and authorize any necessary change orders in an amount up to 10% of the total project cost. We're ready for the vote. David.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Lou.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay. Item on the agenda, 14, the Mary E. Branch Community Center Assessment. Mr. Stanley.
Over the past year, Madam Chair, county and town staff have been meeting with representatives from the Mary E. Branch Community Center Nonprofit Group to evaluate feasibility of renovation and reuse of the Mary E. Branch Community Center. One of the issues that had to be overcome was ensuring there was clear title to the property by the Mary E. Branch Community Center nonprofit. That issue has now been resolved. A copy of the court order, it bleeds in your packet. The building has been evaluated several times in the past for renovation. I firmly believe we're at a point now where if something doesn't happen with the building soon, maybe too late to renovate it. I've worked with Mosley Architects in the past on the renovation of a former library building and development of a community center project in Front Royal. They've been out and taken a look at Mary E. Branch, and have developed an estimate to develop an assessment of the building for renovation and reuse. Important that would be developing a cost estimate, what it's going to take to renovate it. The town of Farmville has officially asked the county to split the cost of the study 50/50 prior to committing to renovation of the structure. We're also working with the CRC on grant funding opportunities, including the Industrial Revitalization Fund, which leverages local and private resources to achieve market-driven redevelopment of vacant and deteriorated industrial and commercial properties. The program is targeted towards vacant non-residential structures whose poor condition creates physical and economic blight to the surrounding area in which the structure is located. That building certainly fits that bill, and it's sitting basically across the street from Longwood and the new, you know, convocation center that's going up. I think this is the, kind of the perfect time to be talking about this. Eligible properties include those formerly used for manufacturing, warehousing, mining, transportation, power production, as well as large-scale white elephant structures such as department stores, theaters, hotels, and shopping centers. Structures whose proposed inuse will be solely residential are not eligible. This year, with ARPA funding, they have increased the maximum award from $500,000 to $5 million. So, basically, half that five potentially could be grant award. The town is looking to put an application in by the mid-August deadline, and the program requires a 50% match that could be done with a combination of town-county contributions, Tobacco Commission grants, or other grants, and fundraising by the Mary Branch Community Center group. At this point, the feasibility study would let the town and county know the options and cost to rehab and reuse the facility. In your packet, you've got a request from the town of Farmville, Mosley's letter and facility assessment estimate, and the MEB Community Center deed. The recommendation is to approve the request to partner with the town of Farmville and provide 50% or $11,303 of the funding for the proposed facility system to evaluate the facility for building renovation use. Such funds would come from budget line 92,05807, which is our reserve for contingency line. Happy to answer any questions, if any board members have any.
Are there any questions from any of the board members? If not, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion has been made in second, that the Board of Supervisors approve the request to partner with the town of Farmville and provide 50%, which is $11,303, of the funding for the proposed facility assessment as outlined in the letter from Mosley Architects dated September 14, 2021, to evaluate the facility for building renovation and reuse. A further move that $11,303 be transferred from budget line 92,005807, reserved for contingencies, to new project budget line to cover the county's share of the expense. Cannon.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Lou.
Yes.
Odessa. I'm moved, I'm so moved in a way. Thank you. Next on the agenda, board position appointments. Let me serve a bucket.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, there are four, five positions listed on page 179 in your board pack. With the transitions that we've had in the membership of the Board of Supervisors, we have some vacancies. We also have, with our two new board members, positions to which they need to be appointed just to keep those bodies current in their membership. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. The Planning Commission, the Poplar Hills CDA, and the Crossroad Community Services Board, those are all Board, Board of Supervisors-held positions. So, a member of the board would be appointed to fill those vacancies.
Okay.
And where it says District 7 Board Member, we wrote this before we knew who that would be, so.
Right.
That'd now be Mr. Watson.
Absolutely.
Okay, sorry, do we act on these separately?
Yes, ma'am, you, I mean, I think you could vote by, like Granite Falls CDA have a motion to appoint with the terms as designated. Their terms are, you know, to the deadline of their, of their current appointment.
Okay. Okay, board members for the Granite Falls CDA. Okay, board members for the Granite Falls CDA, we have recommended Ms. Carol Stiff and Mr. Cannon Watson.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Okay, the Virginia Hotlins WS Authority, we have Ms. Carol Stiff and Mr. Cannon Watson. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
So.
So moved in second. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the Planning Commission, we have a vacancy. Could I have a nomination? Suggested would be good for that position.
I nominate Lou Gillum.
I'll second that.
Okay, could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, that Mr. Lou Gillum be recommended for that. Lou, I'm gonna start with you.
Do I get to vote for myself?
Yeah. You go for yourself. Gladly. Okay, Lou?
Maybe I won't.
Is that a yes, Lou?
That's it, I kinda started, I'm starting with the whole one.
Patty?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Yes, so we have Mr. Lou Gillum. Okay, moving down to the Poplar Hills CDA, Beverly Booth formerly served as, as that member. Sarah, how would you suggest there? Do we?
So Beverly's current term would expire, I believe, in 2023.
23.
So, so if you, if you did a two-year appointment, I would recommend that, I mean, you could go ahead and make the appointment until June the 30th, 20, excuse me, 24, and give that individual a two-year appointment. We try to keep the majority of the appointments at the June meeting and the December meeting. I explained to Dr. Pride earlier that we don't like to lose them mid-year. So even if the term is a little bit longer, a little bit shorter, it helps us kind of keep track of all of these bodies that need appointments when Karen and I know that they're going to be done in June and in December. So that's why we would recommend that the term of office be whatever year the board prefers, but we try and make it expire on June the 30th.
Okay. Board members, do a nomination for that position.
I guess the other option is, you could wait and see who gets appointed to that seat, because the, obviously, the Poplar Hill CDA is located within that district.
Right.
That is correct.
And, and that's what I would suggest.
Okay, we'll just postpone that until the August meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
And the Crossroads Commission Service Board, Beverly was serving on that. And as a chair, I would like to make a recommendation. Tell me how you feel. I think Ms. Carol Stiff would work well on the Cross Road Service Board. What do you think?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so it's removed in second. David?
Yes.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
And you get to vote, Ms. Carol?
Yes.
Okay, Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
I told you so. Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa, yes.
Madam Chair, would you like to make that appointment? So three and a half years would be to December the 31st, 2025, or you can make it to November the 8th, 2022, and then depending the outcome of the November election.
That's, that's what I would prefer to do.
Okay, so we'll do it, Karen, until 11:08:22, and then put that on the November board agenda.
Thank you, yes.
Yes.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
I'm next.
I'm right, I was gonna say, while you're still there.
Yes, ma'am.
Board electronic meeting policy, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am, the county administrator and I had been paying attention to proposed changes in the, I believe this is housed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And so there have been, since the board adopted its electronic meeting policy several years ago, there have been some changes, and I highlighted those. The first one being that a medical condition of a member of the board's family is an allowable, I'm gonna say, use of the electronic meeting policy. The second one is the number of meetings, it's increased, it used to be 2% or 25%, whichever is less, now it's 2% or 25%, whichever is greater. This would be at the discretion of the board. You don't have to make that change. But we did show that change in the draft on page 182.
Okay.
And then the third one is just based on if the board wishes to set a deadline by which the member who's requesting electronic meeting access to actually notify the chair of the county administrator. You know, I, I don't know that that's ever been a problem, and sometimes the emergency or whatever arises, or can arise, very late in the day.
Right, yes.
So I think we drafted that to say as on or before the day of the meeting, which pretty much is, let us know before the meeting starts.
That covers everything.
Yes, ma'am. So with that, if those are, if the board is in agreement with all of those, then I believe the policy on page, the draft policy on page 182 could represent the board's choices.
I'm gonna move that the Prince Edward Board Supervisor approve an updated electronic meeting policy as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion in second, that the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors approve an update to its electronic meeting policy as presented. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa, yes, so moved. Thanks, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Cheryl Simpson, Finance and HR. Oh, that's okay, sure.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have some transfer of funds that we are requesting, and the first one is for $698,600, and that is funds that we had additional in those account codes, and we want to move them to committed funds. And we had discussed committed funds last year, where we were taking money out of the original funds and keeping them in this committed pot, so that should we have expenditures for those items, we would be able to cover them.
A great example is, like, county recreation, you know, we didn't spend those monies, we're putting them in the committed pot, so they sit there for that original purpose. The board would have to move them out of that special project fund in order to expend them. But you're able to take maybe two or three years' worth of funds and then be able to pay for whatever project you've got. And the case, say, of the, of the regional jail, we know our, our, our population there fluctuates by having that kind of, it's a dedicated reserve fund to cover any overages or capital improvements of the jail project, so to speak.
Sure, with the Worsham Clerk's Office. Exactly what has been done with that, if anything?
So that's money that we had budgeted. We probably need, Sarah's shaking her head over there, we probably need to spend the money, we didn't spend it this year. This way, we'll set it aside. We're gonna need to do some painting and some renovate, maybe some roof work at some point there on the old building. But this way, you're able to build a little bit of reserve fund without having to come back and say, let's dip into the general fund, or let's dip in our reserves. We've already got some money set aside to address it.
Okay.
I'm gonna move we approve appropriations.
I bet you are, Jerry. Can you do that?
Yeah, because we're not, we're not giving it to the jail yet, so.
No, we're not giving it to the jail. Okay, a motion has been made in second, that we approve the appropriations. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
So moved.
And our second is transfer of funds for animal control. If you look, their part-time salaries had more than it needed to, for their part-time person, and they want to move that to the full-time salaries, and just down the list. With the motor vehicle, that was committed funds from last year that were not spent, that we had anticipated spending on their vehicle, and so this year, we actually have it in the budget to spend it, it's already been spent, for $43,141.07.
Okay.
Move that we approve appropriations.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second, that we approve appropriations. Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
And Odessa, yes. So moved.
Thank you. Our next is our county credit card policy. We looked everywhere for a county credit card policy, and we could not find one. Based on a recommendation from the auditors, we created one to establish the guidelines and responsibilities for our credit cards. Doug has one, Sarah has one, Randy has one, County Attorney has one, and the Sheriff's Department has one. So we want to make sure that they're being used properly and that we're accounting for the money correctly. So here's our policy. Basically, it says that they authorize certain individuals to be able to use their credit cards, and there's also a form for everybody to fill out that would be authorized to use them, as well as the credit card holders. And the last page is the authorized credit card users for those credit cards.
So the list of people underneath, though, these are the only ones authorized, Lou, use Ms. Puckett's and, and Stanley's?
That is correct.
I thought you'd done a good job on the policy, though. I read it.
Thank you.
Thought it was a very good job, well-written.
We borrowed it. I tweaked it.
Okay, board, what you move?
Move that we approve the, approve the policy as written.
Second.
Okay, yeah. A motion has been made in second, that we approve the policy as presented. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa, yes, so moved, sure.
And then our last policy is our travel expenses policy, and this was originally adopted by the board in September of 2006. There were not any major changes made to it, it was just updated and given a nice fresh appearance. So it, it's just an updated policy, so everybody is aware of, of the policy, because I didn't even know this existed either.
So Mr. Stanley, do we have to act on that one, too?
We, I would ask that you act on that, reapply.
Okay. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Okay, as we moved in second, that we approve the policy for travel reimbursement. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Odessa, so moved. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the county attorney's report, Ms. Terry Wilson.
Board, welcome to the, the two new additions, and Doug. We last met on June 14th, and the very next morning at 4:30 a.m., I went and had my rotator cuff repaired. So just want to update you on what's happened since the last board meeting. Of course, we've been busy with the three members doing petitions and orders to have the special elections so that we could move forward and replace the three members that we, that we've had to replace, and, like I said, welcome to the, to new additions. June 24th, we had an IDA board meeting, and we talked again with, trying to wrap up the travel access and the access road easements, and also talked about mitigation credits for the access road. On June 21st, we had a hearing for the Board of Zoning Appeals, which, for the reference to the construction of Flagpole, and so I attended that meeting and to represent the Board of Zoning Appeals. Anyway, we had a couple of administrative questions about, we had Bobby Jones's check, and I tried to interpret it that there was some legal issue there and some accounting issue, but it was mainly just turning it over to the executor. Anyway, Doug made a note about the opioid settlement that we, we got in. We worked on the paperwork back just to get in part of that, that settlement that was distributed out to the state. Anyway, we also had worked with the new board members, with the, we had a board member that was already a member of the SS Board, and so we had to look in that, investigate what we had to do so there, because we didn't, couldn't have two members on there at one time. So we just had to kind of look through and, and get an answer to that question. Anyway, that's a brief summary of the things we've been working on this month. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, anything they'd like to ask me at this point?
Anyone have questions or concerns? If not?
All right.
Chair, thank you for your.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the county administrator's report. Mr. Stanley.
Coronavirus, a quick update, obviously, you know, there's an uptick in cases, and we've heard, and I've talked to supervisor towns about some of the other jails are going through it. But, you know, our local health department continues to take walk-ins for vaccine booster shots on Tuesdays. We encourage people to, you know, if they're eligible to get the booster, to get their booster, but we're closely watching the situation. The judge has not lifted the masking requirement here at the courthouse and public spaces, so we're still respecting that. But, you know, it's, it's gonna be with us for a while, it's something we have to live with and, and deal with. The District 1 seat, so the board has authorized staff to advertise that, I believe that ad will be in the paper this Friday, and applications will be due the last Friday in July, is that the 29th, Sarah? And then we've got a meeting scheduled the following week, again, so that we can hopefully appoint a candidate to sit at the August 9th board meeting. If anybody out there in the public, applications can be obtained from the county administrator's office, and if you know of anyone interested, please have them get in touch with our office. The, I want to thank the board for the industrial park access road and getting that project moving forward. That's, again, been something a long time coming, and we're glad to get that off the plate. Sandy River Reservoir, we do at the board's action last Friday, we have that out for public comment. The public comment period will end, I believe, on August 23rd, and the board will have a hearing that night to consider that as well. Enterprise own project, Chelsea and I have met with a developer about a potential project, looking at the Poplar Hall Building downtown. We're working to develop a proposed incentive plan to present to the Properties Committee at their meeting coming up in August. We talked about it at our meeting earlier today. The project would involve potentially the investment of several million dollars downtown. Courthouse chiller replacement, the new chiller will be delivered, has been delivered to our contractor. The temporary chiller was put in place outside the courthouse today, will be hooked up tomorrow. So we're anticipating that over the next two, three weeks, they'll be able to pull the old chiller with a crane and bring the new one in, and get things hooked up, and then pull the temporary chiller and get that project completed. Cannery boiler, the contractors completed the installation of the new boiler, the cannery. County staff are working with the contractor on a list of punch list items prior to authorizing payment of the project. As Randy told the Properties Committee tonight, I think the, the old boiler took 45 minutes of running to get up to steam, and now it's 15 minutes. So it's much more efficient and much better for the staff to operate it. Courthouse lawn, contractor, again, was on site, started on June 13th. They actually poured concrete today for the areas that will get pavers, and we're hopeful that project will be completed probably mid-September. We've been busy ordering all the site amenities, including benches, trashcans, planters, all that stuff, should be delivered sometime in early August for the project. Courthouse telephone. They actually poured concrete today for the areas that will get pavers, and we're hopeful that project will be completed probably mid-September. We've been busy ordering all the site amenities, including benches, trashcans, planters, all that stuff should be delivered sometime in early August for the project. Courthouse Telephone System, we're very close to wrapping that up with Connects and hope to complete the final offices here in the next week or so. VACO Summit, Supervisor Townsend and I will be meeting this Thursday with the Deputy Secretary of Public Safety and Homeland Security on Thursday to lobby for additional funding for the Piedmont Regional Jail. Afterward, we're going to stop by the VACO Region One and Four meeting in Dimwitty. And I know, Madam Chair, I've given you information on that, if you can make it or not. But I think we're going to try to, hopefully, if we can make it, we'll try to swing by there and advocate for Prince Edward, particularly for the school funding for capital improvements. I also, today, attended ribbon cutting for Eastern Wood Products there. It's a new facility down at the Heartland Industrial Park where they are, they bring, they bring in like LVL wood products and sell them out to places like Lowe's and other projects and directly to the job site. But good project for Charlotte County, but that we're a partner with them, because we sit on, Jerry and I sit on the industrial facility board, and we're excited with our other neighbors, including Amelia and Lunenburg, to celebrate that with Charlotte. Last thing I have, Industrial Park. So the board approved the construction bid tonight for the Industrial Park Access Road. The road will open up, again, about a hundred acres to future economic development. In review of the Platts, Terry has identified that while some of the land is in the name of the IDA, a bulk of it was somewhere along the line transferred back to the county. And at this point, I just need a motion from the board to authorize me, as the county administrator, to sign off on the proposed subdivision Platts that include the necessary dedication of right-of-way and slope and drainage construction easements for the project. The subdivision divides the property up into four parcels, and I've got, I've got a couple sets of plans, and you can pass that down, Madam Chair, and Patty. It doesn't, other than dedicating the road right-of-way and easements, it doesn't, no land changes hands. It's simply dividing it up, and at some point, we're going to want to transfer this back to the IDA to let them market the property. But at least this will allow us to get the road project done, and I just want to thank Terry for her diligence. It's something that the surveyors missed, but Terry caught it, and I appreciate Terry doing that. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions that, again, it's, I don't know, maybe Joyce, maybe you remember, but at some point, the IDA had it, it got transporced, it got transferred back to the county, and it's in your name, so I need your authority to be able to sign off on the subdivision Platt.
So moved.
Second.
They still moved in second that Mrs. Stanley is authorized to sign up on this project. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Odessa, yes. So moved. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Stanley, are we on the addendum packet?
Yes, ma'am. If you can give me just a second to, can I get to that one real quick?
Sure.
All right, so the first item there is the account claims, the board malice report. I think you just got, you just got one request on there for that.
Okay. In item twenty-three, the Sandy River Reservoir water sampling and treatability study.
So, in April of two thousand and twenty, the board approved an additional engagement for professional engineering services from the Timmons Group to assist the county with the submission of an application DEQ for the renewal of the county's intake permit for the Sandy River Reservoir. In April of twenty-two this year, the board approved a contract with Timmons to move forward on a water sampling program and treatability study for the reservoir to cover three months of reservoir sampling. That was April, May, and June, and one month of treatability, that was May of twenty-two, at a cost of one hundred and twenty thousand. We limited it to three months to allow additional time for us to negotiate with the Department of General Services on the memorandum of understanding to provide water for the state facilities and to allow us to enter into an interim agreement with the Prince Edward County Infrastructure to get the PPA project moving forward. We've got the MOU done. You've advertised the interim agreement for public hearing, so that's in process. This time, Timmons was requesting approval to move forward with the full study, which would include the nine additional months required by the Virginia Department of Health for sampling of the water and an additional month of treatability study. The testing outline needs to be performed over the next year. The additional cost is four hundred and twenty thousand for a total of five hundred and forty thousand. The water sampling program will serve to characterize the water quality of the reservoir, the raw water, and identify treatment goals. The treatability study will serve to confirm that the selected treatment processes will meet the treatment goals. The sampling and testing program can be justified alone on the basis of assisting the engineer in their design. However, the Virginia Department of Health offers a drinking water will likely require the program to successfully permit the water treatment plant. Previous water sampling and treatability studies were performed in two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, and a new round of sampling and testing is recommended to confirm. There have been no changes to the reservoir's water quality to provide additional water sampling specific to the proposed water intake location and depths and to perform a treatability study specific to the engineer's intended treatment approach. While the full water sampling program and treatability study will run from April of twenty-two through March of twenty-three, the scope and fee, now, this will cover those additional nine months to get us there. A copy of the scope of work dated April seventh is included in your packet. I did not ask Joe Hines to be here, since we've already kind of been through this before. I know we all hate spending money, but this is part and parcel with the re permitting for the reservoir. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have, or, you know, possibly I could even get Mr. Hines on the phone if we need to.
I move that the board approved the proposal from Timmons Group dated June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, for a water sampling program and treatability study for the Sandy River Reservoir and authorize the county administrator to sign the proposal.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve the proposal from the Timmons Group dated June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, for a water sampling program and treatability study for the Sandy River Reservoir and authorize the county administrator to sign the proposal. David?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved. Next on the agenda, by Sarah, citizen volunteer appointments, authorized advertising.
Yes, ma'am. There are now two vacancies on two important citizen volunteer boards in the county. That is the Department of Social Services and the County Planning Commission. So historically, the board has advertised those vacancies for citizen volunteer applications. I would note that the vacancy on the County Planning Commission is a town position, so that would be a position that would be held by a resident inside the town of Farmville. And also, historically, the Department of Social Services, we have tried to manage the geographic distribution throughout the county with the appointments of the citizen volunteers to that board, anchored by the board of supervisors representative. So since, as a stiff was from the rice area, we would consider that the vacancy is what we would call from the greater rice area of Prince Edward County, or maybe the northeast quadrant of the county, just to try and keep that geographic distribution in the county. So all I would ask is that you authorize advertising the vacancies. We can make it, try and make it a quick turnaround and try and bring these back to you in August.
Okay, a motion has been made in second that we advertise the vacancies. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Odessa, yes. So moved to advertise, Sarah. Thank you. Next on the agenda, committee reports, the Properties Committee.
Yes, ma'am. The Properties Committee comprising Supervisor David Emmert as chair and Supervisor Patty Cooper Jones and Supervisor Jerry Townsend, met this afternoon beginning at five p.m. The committee brings to the board two recommendations, both for procurement. One in the solid waste department, it would be for the purchase of three thirty-yard containers, two forty-yard containers. These prices were procured per our procurement policy, with the low bidder was CCS for a total bid, I'm going to say rounding thirty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars for the five containers. Okay. So we would, because that exceeds the threshold, we need the board's approval on that procurement. And it comes as a recommendation from the Properties Committee. Okay.
Could I have a motion for the recommendation?
So moved.
Okay, it's, then, a motion has been made in second that we approve that recommendation. So moved.
The second procurement is from the Buildings and Grounds Department.
Excuse me, oh, Sarah, let's get to vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. Thank you, Patty.
Sarah? Yes, ma'am. The Buildings and Grounds Department also bid the, the patching and sealing of the Sandy River Reservoir parking lot. They obtained three bids with a low bid of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from, let's see, I think I forgot to write that down.
Is that Virginia paving?
Virginia paving.
Virginia paving, thank you. So Mr. Cook is requesting board approval of that procurement to the, to award the contract, to the low bidder, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's so moved in second that we appropriate the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion made and approved. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, concerns? At this time, I would like to make a motion that the board of supervisors convene in closed session. First, for discussion and consideration of the annual performance of the county attorney pursuant to the exemptions provided for in section two-point-two, dash three-seven-one-one, dash A-one of the Code of Virginia. And two, for discussion of the award of a public contract for legal services and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to the exemption provided for in section two-point-two, three-seven-one-one, A-twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's motion in second. I entertain a rolling call. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved. We're going to enter into closed session.
And David, one of us will call you in. You want to go to the conference room?
Yes, please. Conference room, please.
Are we going to the conference?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to move back into the regular session.
Move, do we?
Madam Chair, I'm going to move it in open session.
Yes, second.
Okay, it's motion been made in second that we move back into regular session. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David? Odessa, yes. Whereas the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-37122 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board is there second to the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of clauses one and two should state the substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. We will now entertain a vote. David?
No.
Patty?
No.
Lou?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Carol?
No.
Jerry?
No.
And Odessa? No. Thank you. Okay, and certify. So are we ready for adjournments?
I think the only other thing, I just, in your pack under correspondence, it was, we had written a letter of support for PSR, they'd applied for some funding through Centra. Whenever I do something like that, I like to keep the Board apprised of, you know, what items the county and through me has written a letter on behalf of, so, just informational purposes.
Thank you. Any little comments or suggestions? I would like a motion to recess until August 4th, 2022 at 5:30 PM.
So move?
Second.
Moving second. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. Y'all have a good evening.